I only got here.
Okay.
Have all this taken care of. All right. Shall I go ahead and get started? Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. So nice to see such a great crowd here. And we have several things to accomplish tonight. And I know each of you are probably here for different sections of the various meetings, but let the record reflect that all board members are present. And we will say the pledge later at the regular meeting. So with that, I'm going to read the section of the Missouri State statute that applies to the type of election or non-election that we had this year. It says, "If the number of candidates who have filed for a particular office is equal to the number of positions in that office to be filled by the election, no election shall be held for such office, and the candidate shall assume the responsibilities of their offices at the same time and in the same manner as if they had been elected." Two terms on the Springfield Board of Education expire in April 2014. Denise Frederick and Tim Rosenberg filed petitions and were certified in January of 2011. And so at this time, usually, we certify the election results, but we don't have to do that this time. So congratulations. And they will be sworn in in just a few minutes. But before that, we want to take time to say thank you to very valued colleague who will be leaving the board after six years of service, 12 years? How long has it?
Only six.
Six. And I know a couple of us have some things to say, so.
Get you up.
Wait. No. No, you're fine, Tom. Just stay right there.
Stay right there.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Go ahead.
Yep.
I don't know if everybody's going to tell stories, but I just want to say, just being on the board with Tom and who really, to me, envisions the idea of service. And we got Rotary Service Above Self and all that, but truly, you are a servant to this community and to this board and to these students in Springfield Public Schools. And it's certainly been an honor to serve with you, and I know that you've got bigger and better things that you're going to be doing. Hopefully, they won't be on my eyes, but they may be. Who knows by the time I get? Just stay sharp, okay? In case you do this again. But it's been a truly pleasure. I think you've been an unbelievable representative for our kids in this district. Your perspective, your demeanor, your participation and involvement has been truly, I hope, to be a mentor for other people and other board members to look up to and go, yeah, that's what we want to do when we become board members on Springfield Public School Board. And your respect through the community, your respect to the state certainly has been a tremendous asset to this district, to this community and to our kids. So I just want to express my thanks to you for your six years of service. It's gone by fast. It seemed like it was longer, but six years went pretty quick. And just certainly thank you and best of luck in whatever your next little step's going to be. And whatever it is, it'll be good for Springfield.
Anyone else? Just any questions? Yeah.
Mr. Prater has been a mentor for me as a new board member. He has always modeled professionalism, commitment, and many times, you can see that sparkle of pure joy for serving the students and families of Springfield. So I will very much miss him.
I think Tom's experience in this community and what he brought to the board is pretty unparalleled as the things he's done for our community. And then he brought that expertise to the board and shared it here with us, who some of us have focused in one area, and he's just been able to focus completely in the community and bringing those things to and our systems better than it was six years ago when he started on the board. And I think as any board member, that's what you'd want to have happen. And I can truly say it, we're a better system now than when he started on the board. And I don't think I can give anybody any bigger compliment than that.
Tom, thanks for your service. You've worked hard, and I would echo the other comments that you have brought a lot to this table. What I go back to is your sense of professionalism, even when we disagreed. And I think that's a trait of this board, but it was exemplified by you that we could disagree and still be professional about it. And I appreciate that. And I think as a result of that, you have made this board better and this district better. So I appreciate your six years of service and good luck in your next service. I'm sure you'll go somewhere and find someplace to serve.
Tom, thank you also for your service. I've only worked with you a year, but I know you are a strong leader, particularly during the tax levy. It's an important time. You spoke well and very articulately about the message that school had, and it was successful. And I think the key reason why that happened. So thank you for your dedication and your commitment to our community.
And I'll just say, I think, I didn't know Tom Prater before you were on the board, and now I consider you a very dear friend and someone whose judgment I respect and whose vision for this community is unparalleled. And so I really, from a personal perspective, but also from a professional perspective, thank you for that. Tom guided us through and was president of the board during the infamous state audit. And I think as we think back on what that was for our district and how we came through that and really some of the results of that, both locally and statewide, a lot of that had to do with Tom's professionalism, his respect in political circles, and certainly your connections about everybody in this city. So thank you for that. So with that, on behalf of-
Can I say a word or two?
You want to say it?
If I could just say a word.
Jeez, Norm, you're just ruining the whole drama here, you know?
I'm sorry. Sorry about that. On behalf of the cabinet and also the staff, we really like and enjoyed your six years with us. Also, I want to thank Kim. I mean, you know, you sacrificed, I think, anyway, as far as supporting Tom and supporting us. So really appreciate that. And your daughters as well. And so I know we've grown. I know you've grown from the experience as far as being president. But also, I appreciate what you're going to do with Every Child Promise, you and Kim, and that's really an awesome thing. So anyway, I wish you well and want to thank you. And hey, we're always getting better. So appreciate it. Now you can go.
Okay. Now, on behalf of the board and the district.
I'll have a place of honor for that. In fact, I think I already know where it will go. You know, I'm really a short-term person on this board compared to many of you, so my comments will be appropriately brief. Thank you and good night. No, seriously, most of you know that I don't sweat the little stuff very much. But to me, this has been a big deal. And I really, as all the board members here tonight do, take it very seriously. And I'm proud not just to have served on this board, the fact that the voters had the trust and confidence to put me on this board, but the fact that you all, as board members, had the trust to elect me to serve as an officer for four years. I'm not sure that was trust or, well, Prater will do it. We've got an audit coming up. We've got a deficit going. We've got... But certainly, the last six years have been very interesting. And many of you on the staff and certainly on the board have been through all this. And I think that Andy mentioned that what we do is we really try to think what's best for our kids and what's best for our community. And we approach it from different directions. We agree and we disagree, but we all professionally work it out. And I think that's the hallmark of this board, really, since I've served before. And that's not always true when we look back historically. So even tonight, I agreed with Andy. But I do think we all have the same thing in mind, and I'd encourage the board to keep their, to keep the community-wide perspective. Let's not get bogged down in the details. What our job is is to take the needs of the community and bring them to the board and take the needs of the district and take them back to the community. And it's a two-fold role, not just talking to the community and telling our great stories, but also going, being able to go to the community and say, here are our needs. Here's what we need you to do. We expect you to step up. It's really been a pleasure to work with so many of the staff I see in this room that I've gotten to know and really respect. And what you all do with the limited resources we provide for you is pretty amazing. I really have a lot of respect for that. I'm jealous of Dr. Ritter and his retirement. I'm excited to see Dr. Jungman come on. I think that the thing that made me leave the board feeling very confident about the future is the fact that we've hired Dr. John Jungman to be here. So that's great. I'll be gone, but not silent, as you can probably imagine. As Norm mentioned, Kim and I have stepped onto the Every Child Promise Board, so I may be in that podium over the next year informing you and begging you and reminding you of what your future duties need to be. So and I think Kim and I are both excited about that. She's been very supportive over the past six years, and it's nice that we'll be able to work together instead of her being in the background. So thank you very much.
All right, Kathy Luton picked the trophy here.
Okay, with that, we will adjourn this portion of the meeting, and I'll ask Mr. Struckoff to come forward and swear on the new members.
As they're coming up, I want to thank you, Richard, for all your work.
And this is the last time I'll be able to do this.
Oh, man.
Yes, I know that. I want to thank you for that.
That's really-
Yes.
Awesome. Looks like it. Looks like it. Yeah. There you go, Tim. Good beat with that.
In your right hand.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of school director.
Discharge the duties of school director.
In and for the school district of Springfield, R12.
In and for the school district of Springfield, R12.
Of Greene County, Missouri.
Of Greene County, Missouri.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
I take this opportunity to welcome back Dr. Frederick and then also welcome Tim Rosenberg to the board. And on that note, we will have an election of officers, starting with the president. And so just to remind everybody, I will take a nomination. If there's just the one nomination, we'll take a vote. If there's two, we'll continue on with that. So as the superintendent, I'm asking, is there a nomination for board president? Yes?
Dr. Ritter, I'd like to nominate Denise Frederick.
Okay. We have Denise Frederick as a person that's been nominated, a board member. Anybody else? Any other nominations from the board? Dr. Frederick, are you okay with this nomination? If I may-
I think so.
Okay, all right. If not, if there are no other nominations, the nominations are closed. So all in favor of Dr. Frederick being the president of the board, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Congratulations, Dr. Frederick.
My turn. Thank you. I appreciate the board's confidence, and I will also appreciate your patience as I learn this process. At this time, we'd like to take nominations for vice president. Are there any nominations for vice president?
Madam-
Go ahead.
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Andy Hosmer as vice president.
Thank you. Andy Hosmer has been nominated for vice president. Do we have any other nominations for vice president? Hearing no other nominations, all those in favor of Andy Hosmer for vice president, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So congratulations, the board supports. And I didn't ask you if you're okay with that.
Oh, I'm fine with it, thanks.
First out of line, probably, the board votes Andy Hosmer for vice president of the school board. This time, I'd also like to take nominations for treasurer. Do we have any nominations for treasurer?
I would like to nominate-
No, oh, you can't do that.
I can't. I was going to say yes.
I'll nominate Steve Chotis. We have the nomination of Steve Chotis for treasurer. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of Steve Chotis for board treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, nay. Hearing none, the board supports Steve Chotis for treasurer. One last vote. We need nominations for board secretary. Do we have any nominations for board secretary?
You will, ma'am.
I'll nominate Kathy Luton. Any other nominations for board secretary? So hearing none. Nominations are closed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The board supports Kathy Luton for board secretary. At this time, Norm, do you have some introductions?
Yes, I do. Before that, though, I just want to remind Mr. Chotis and also Ms. Luton that this is a two-year election, so you're on for two years, okay? This time, yes, Mr. Rosenberg, if you would, want to introduce your family, if you would, please?
Thank you. It's a pleasure to do that. My wife, Jeannie, is here. You, Jeannie doesn't like public appearances. She's the light of my life. And then I'm honored to have my two sons here, Charlie, who is sitting next to Jeannie, and George, who's standing in the back row with his friend, Dagny Aiken. And all four of those people that I've introduced are graduates of Glendale High School.
Awesome.
I, Charlie's wife, Kasia, and their children, Rachel and Mary, would have been here, but Rachel's a little bit under the weather, and she would have caused a major disruption, but she's cuter than your grandchild.
Whoa. Why do you sit between?
And I can prove it. I'll be happy to prove it sometime, Madam President. But yes, thank you all for coming, you guys. You honor me very much. Thank you.
Dr. Frederick?
Yes. My husband is here. Gail, would you please stand? And my daughter-in-law, Lindsay Frederick, is here, the mother of, did they leave? Did they have to leave? Oh, the mother of Olivia.
She is.
Pretty darn cute. And Trenton. And I also, my stepdaughter Carolyn is here, and that's Bryce.
Oh, wow.
And is Austin back there or just Bryce? Okay. And then I also have my niece, new niece-in-law to the family, Cassie. Will you please stand? This is a future elementary teacher, I'm hoping, for Springfield. And then I have, is my sister here, Suzie? She may not have been able to make it. Okay. Is Suzie here? And then I have very dear friends, my husband, you can see, is coaching me back there. Remind me. Very dear friends, Shelley and Olivia Marshall. They'll stand. Yeah, known Olivia's, and she was a little tiny thing, so it's great to see her here. And then I also have dear friends, Trish Hubbell. Trish is here. And then there's staff that I also count as dear friends here, and I won't point you out at this time, but let's see if I, anyone else here that I forgot or left out? And, and my sister-in-law. I didn't see her back there. Stand up, Nanette.
Oh, yes.
My sister-in-law is here. Thank you. And these are the folks that support me and give me a call and help me to stay on track and let me know what the public thinks. So very good. I appreciate all of you being here so much, so.
While we're at it, you know, we have a new vice president, and I noticed your family walked in. Do you want to introduce them?
No, not really.
Oh, okay.
Jogi, my wife is in the back, standing in the back there, Kay, Milled. And it looks like my two nieces from Chicago.
Wow.
They are Chicago girls.
Wow.
Caitlin and Sophia are here. My sister's here somewhere, perhaps. And my mother's around somewhere.
Your mother's here?
She may be here.
Mom Hosmer?
She didn't want to come in.
Oh, okay.
She's not that proud, so.
So at this time, we will adjourn our reorganizational meeting. So we'll take just a short five-to-ten-minute break, probably more like five minutes, and allow anyone to say goodbye and thank you to anyone here. And then we will reconvene for our April 15 study session meeting. Thank you. Good evening. The Tuesday, April 15, 2014 study session is now opening and is now in order, so we'd like to welcome all our guests, and we appreciate your interest in our meeting. And our first order will be to roll call. But prior to that, as we move into that, I would like to welcome Mr. Tim Rosenberg to the board. And we appreciate your willingness to serve the students and families of Springfield. And I personally look forward to the rich professional and personal experience that you're going to bring to our work. A fantastic article in the paper. And I'm still going to say that even after the comment about my grant. And let the record show that all members of the board are in attendance this evening. So please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And one of our favorite parts of the meeting is our special recognition. And so we will now move to our agenda item 2.0, special recognition, and we will hear from Dr. Harrell.
Good evening, Madam President. Congratulations. Congratulations, Mr. Rosenberg. Welcome aboard. This is not deja vu, nor is it a misprint. We have a very special celebration again, and it's only been a few months since some of these young folks were here with you to celebrate this earlier. Mark Fisher, our athletic director, is here to tell you again a little bit more about how special this opportunity is. Mark?
Thank you, Dr. Harrell. Dr. Ritter, members of the board. Kathy Luton, could you reserve the corresponding date next year for the Glendale Lady Falcon Swim Team? It's my honor to introduce the head swim coach at Glendale, Mr. Steve Boyce. You can tell Coach Boyce is not very well-liked by his members of the swim team, but Coach Boyce was last year's state coach of the year. I think he was here last year, and we presented that award to him. But again, up until last year, no Springfield swim team had won a state championship. So not only did they win it last year, but they came back and had a repeat effort. And I'm going to let Coach Boyce talk to you about his ladies and about the great accomplishment this past season. Coach Boyce.
Thanks, Mark. To our school board, thank you for having us back. It's a great opportunity for us to get out in front of you. It's a great opportunity for the girls to dress up, comb their hair, and look nice because we usually are wearing latex caps and swimsuits and we're wet and mascara running down the side of their face. And so to see them all dressed up like this is kind of nice. And their moms like it when they get dressed up, too. And so they took pictures, as you saw before the meeting, and, you know, they never get a chance to do that. So we had a fantastic year. We wrapped up last year with that state title, and we knew we were going to spend the entire season with a target on our back. And we got, we got great challenges from lots of people. And we spent the early part of the season getting acquainted and getting to training. We went to Columbia for an invitational, and Park Hill South brought us a great challenge, and they beat us there. And we finished second, and we were not very happy. And we went back to training and kept on working. Couple weeks later, we went to Parkway South up in St. Louis, which is a spot that I had coached for a number of years. And we had a tough meet-up there. And it's a tough place to race and a tough place to compete, and we ended up fourth. And I got to thank one of the girls from Kirkwood. She got on Twitter. Beat the defending state champs. And boy, in the back of the bus, it was on. Our team was ready. And so it was pretty exciting from that point to start to wrap it out and win the Springfield invite, win our Southwest Missouri championships, and start getting ready for state. As you prepare for state, there's a tremendous amount of training in the background. These girls train eight days, eight times a week. That's five afternoons, two mornings, a Saturday. That's our typical schedule. And do a lot of work that way. They keep up with their schoolwork. We had one of our seniors as a Rose Banquet honoree this year, and we've got a couple in line for next year, so they do a fantastic job with that. So as we continue to do those things, we start getting ready for that last meet of the year, and we had to do some planning and some thinking and had to make some choices on where some people are going to swim. And for some of them, it's real easy. They've got their number-one or number-two event, and we don't have to think a lot. And for some of them, they're pretty versatile, and we have to make choices. And so we sat down and we talked about all those things. Some of them were some phone calls afterwards, trying to settle that up, and we made some entries into state. We get a couple days later, I get the psych sheet, which lists all the rankings. And of course, the math background in me makes me add that up pretty fast. And probably for the first time in a long time, I hadn't shared any of that information with the kids because I added it up, and we were going to get beat by 70. Panic set in for me, until I started to look and think about, how are these girls trained? What have they done? And what are we going to do to prepare? And so we talked about getting ready the first day. The first day of the meet's the preliminaries. The second day's the finals. And in real similar fashion to what we did the previous year, we made a big gain in the very first event, going from a low place to a high place. And this year, we came in ranked a little bit better and qualified as the number-one medley relay. And at that point, it was on for good swims that day. And so at the end of the day, we added it up again, and now we're supposed to win by 30. And so we went from a deficit of 70 to, now we're looking to win by 30. And so we went from a deficit of 70 to, uh, now we're looking to win by 30. Uh, and then we come back into the last day where you actually score the points and we ended up winning the meet by eight points, came down to the last relay. And, uh, we, we basically had to win the last relay to win the meet, um, because the team Marquette that was second in the meet, they were seeded second in the relay. Um, we destroyed them. We beat them by four seconds. Um, and, and you gotta love the, the competitiveness of these girls because they got done with the relay and while they were happy to win the relay, happy to win state, they were also a little bit mad because they missed the state record by two tenths of a second. And so, uh, what I love is that, that feistiness of, let's keep going. You know, we're going to keep plugging away. And so we will, we will reconvene again in, uh, in a few months and, and get after it and start training and, and start getting ready. A lot of them went back to their club teams and started training again, not, the next week, right after state. And so, uh, this is a passion of theirs and I'm lucky to, to share that and go along for the ride with them. Uh, they do a fantastic job. So let me introduce a couple of them. Uh, right off the bat, I'm going to do Nikki Sisson is a state champion in the 100 freestyle. And then I'm going to pull up foreign free relay. Nikki, you can just stay there and, and we'll get the rest of your relay up. The foreign free relay at the end, that was Macy Biusto that led that off. Macy's a sophomore. We had Kaylee Sisson went second. She's also a sophomore. Uh, Madeline Nelson went third and Madeline's a junior. And then Nikki anchored that as her, as a senior on that group. So as you can see, we've got a pretty good crew crumming back. And, uh, so now I'm going to introduce everybody, so I'll let you guys sit down and I'm going to give everybody a chance to wave and say hi. Um, this is Lauren Beatty is a junior. We've got Macy Doran is a freshman. We've got Callie Hackworth back here. Callie's going to wave. Callie said this is her painting over here, the purple house. She got to come and see her painting. We're glad you guys hung that up. That's pretty cool. Um, this is Zane Newman is a freshman. Zane, wave. There you go. We're getting better at waving. Tori Harmon, right there is a junior. We've introduced Macy. This is Hannah Life is a sophomore. We'll go back. This is Josie Stevens is a, is our diver and a, and a swimmer. She did both this year. She's a freshman. Meredith Waits is a junior. Emma Chadwell is a junior. Nikki we talked about. Riley Grinnell is a senior.
Big Riles.
Big Riles. And then, uh, Alexa Borbus on the end as a freshman. Um, a great group of, of young ladies. They do a fantastic job. Um, and overall, we, uh, have had a great time and we hope to come back and see you guys again in a year. So we'll keep working at that. And, uh, congratulations, ladies. Yeah, I want to, I want to throw just one of those pieces of, I, I mentioned the academic part and I, I forgot to throw this back on here. Robert mentioned in the back is our assistant coach. And Robert has gone, in, in our years together, four years together, Robert's gone from a graduate student working on his teaching certificate to teaching full-time at Pershing this year. And now he's going over to the Health Sciences Academy at Mercy and will be starting that up next year. So, uh, pretty cool group.
Congratulations. See you next year.
Thank you.
Hey, Lauren, how you doing?
I'm good.
Congratulations. Congratulations, girl. Congratulations. Hey, girl.
Thanks.
See you back here next year. Congratulations. Good job. Good job. Hey, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
See you next year.
Good job, Steve. Thank you. Good job up there.
Congratulations. That was a job I wanted to create the opportunity to do next year.
Congratulations on swimming and the thing. That's awesome, sir. That's fantastic.
You're going to have fun, huh? That's going to be great. Good job.
Steve, we'll just go ahead and put you on the agenda for this time next year. How does that sound?
We'll try and make our presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Excellent. That's so exciting to see that. So our next, uh, special recognition, 2.02, Joshua Holt, Portland Elementary Principal. And Dr. Hackenworth, are you going to be introducing him?
Good evening. It's my pleasure to join you in recognizing the heroic act of one of our school leaders. In the world of education, school leaders and teachers are in the business of shaping lives every day. This is sometimes a slow process and we don't see that progress quite as quickly as we'd like to, day in and day out. However, there are those times when school leaders and teachers make that impact in an instant. This can be recognized in a split second in the form of a response to an immediate crisis. During the lunch period on May 17th, Portland Elementary School Principal, Mr. Josh Holt, decided to sit down and enjoy a leisurely meal with some of his kindergarten students. I think mini corn dogs were on the menu that day. Little did Mr. Holt know that the CPR training he received from our Health Services Department earlier in the year was about to be put to the test. He was faced with saving the life of one of his students. Here to tell his story is Mr. Holt.
It's tough to follow up a state championship. But, uh, like Dr. Hackenworth said, uh, I usually try, when I do get a chance to eat lunch, to go in and eat with my first grade because they're the first lunch shift and we usually have three or four people in our cafeteria to help supervise. So that's the time I get to sit down and socialize with some of my kids. And, um, I think the importance of this story is that, uh, for some reason, that day, I usually finish lunch in about 10 minutes before my kindergarteners start coming in and that way I can get up and start moving around. And that day, I hadn't finished and I looked, I saw the kindergarteners coming in and setting down and I felt, uh, I felt compelled to move and to go and sit with some of them. And I remember looking over to the first grade students and saying, I'm going to go sit with some of my kindergarten friends. Is that okay? And I remember them saying, yes, that's, that's certainly okay. We, thanks for sitting next to us. Um, and so I went and sat down next to the kindergarten students and sat in our long table and I was sitting next to a couple of kindergarten students, talking about whatever was going on in their day. They're always excited to tell me about what's going on in kindergarten's day. And I noticed one of the students sat down next to me and I happened to notice that he had mini corn dogs on his plate. And I thought, I'm glad I got the tater tots and things. But, um, I continued to converse with some of the students and not, not more than two minutes after he'd sat down, I looked across the table and a sheer panic on a kindergartner's face is something I never want to see again, honestly. Um, but I could tell something was wrong and I asked him, are you okay? And he just shook his head no. And I said, can you, are you choking? And he just shook his head yes. And so I went around the table as quick as I could and I, I went back to my training because you don't think at that time and just remembered my training, asked to cough because usually they can get it out themselves. And so I just asked him, start coughing, try to get it, try to get the food out. And he, he couldn't cough at all. So at that time, I went back to my training. I didn't think, that's, that's the amazing thing. And I proceeded to bend him over a little bit and gave him about three to four back blows and asking him to continue trying to cough. And he couldn't get anything out at that time. So at that time, I reached my hands around and gave him abdominal thrust as we are trained. And about the third abdominal thrust, the mini corn dog came out. Um, and at that time, I just asked him, I started talking to him because I want to make sure that everything was out. And I quickly escorted him, um, to the nurse's office, just continued the conversation and stuff like that. And it wasn't till afterwards that I got to really start sitting there thinking that normally I'm, I'm sitting here and I'm done and I'm usually up moving around. But this happened so quick, I felt touched, touched that day by God to be placed here and placed right across from a kindergartner because he's such a, to me, he, he's a good kid, but at that age, would he have stood up? Would he have known? How long could he have been choking? So I just felt, uh, thankful to him and that's who, who my hero is. So I want to thank him for putting me in that place. Um, but also to the district for our practices, for having us trained. I go back to, still get emotional because after that, it was, I was calm, cool, collected the whole time when I got back to my office after talking to Dad and I was like, wow, that was, that was scary. Um, but our practices allow us to get training, two staff members in every building. But also, as a coach, I had the, the training and I talked to someone today who said, you know, I don't know if I would have done the same thing, having the training. And I said, yes, you would. Instinct just takes over because you've been trained. And so I'm a huge advocate for having as many people trained in the circumstances like that because it can happen in a split second. So thank you guys for taking the time to hear the story today and that's, that's pretty much it. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. That is an incredible story and I think you faced something that all teachers try to be prepared for, but we certainly hope never happens to us. But, uh, that's wonderful. Thank you. Um, so we'll move to, to 3.0, uh, 2.03. And now we will hear from Mr. McKenna about our Teacher of the Year finalist.
Good evening. It's a fun, it's a fun afternoon. It's a fun evening for us. This is one of my favorite, uh, opportunities every year for us to talk about the Teacher of the Year program and, uh, recognize the finalists before you. Um, as you all know, we, we work every year to advertise and collect applications from the community, uh, teachers, staff, parents, students, uh, on teachers that they believe are outstanding and making a difference. And we have so many. We are so fortunate in Springfield to have such a strong, uh, population of teachers that work so hard every day for students. Um, so the, the task of selecting five is difficult and if you ask anyone who serves on that committee, it's a blessing and a curse because it's a very difficult, uh, thing to do. So, uh, we are going to ask for our, our five finalists to stand. They happen to be conveniently placed on the front row. So we'll ask for them to stand here. And I'm going to tell you just a little bit about each of them and as I do that, if, if you'll, um, step forward and then we'll recognize you at the end. So we're going to begin with Melissa Cable. Uh, Melissa's currently a Communication Arts teacher at Wilson's Creek. She has 21 years' teaching experience. 18 of those are with us here in Springfield. Next is Adrian Deckard. Adrian is a, a science teacher at Central High School, uh, completing her fifth year, all of those here in Springfield. Daniel Gutierrez is a vocal music teacher at Reed, five years, all of those, uh, with Springfield. He also has experience from Delaware Elementary School. Andy Johnson is, I'm sorry, Johnston, I forgot the T. Excuse me. Johnson is the orchestra teacher at Glendale, 17 years' experience in Springfield, 22 total years' experience, also experience, um, teaching elementary strings and, uh, serving as the director of the Springfield Youth Symphony. Uh, and then we have Thomas Murkey. Thomas is Communication Arts at Pleasant View, eight years' total experience, also some time at Cherokee. And all of those years, uh, are in Springfield schools. So please join me in recognizing the finalists. And, uh, we want to, again, publicize the Teacher of the Year banquet, which is April 21st. Hopefully that's on everyone's calendar. We would love to see everyone there. We will, again, recognize the finalists and we will announce the selected recipient of the Teacher of the Year, uh, award. Also, it's a great time for us to recognize our sponsors of the award, which are Missouri State University and Mercy Health Systems. And the Foundation for Springfield Schools is our host that evening and is instrumental in making this entire process happen. Uh, but again, we want to say thank you as, uh, from the selection committee to everyone who participated in the process and especially our finalists. So again, thank you very much.
I might ask, are there any questions or comments, um, from members of the board of these fine individuals?
Well, Mr. G also taught at Roundtree, so let's not forget. Told him Delaware.
I'm, so, I apologize.
Roundtree, there were many tears when he left Roundtree. My girls are still confused about that, but.
How many, how many applicants were there?
You know, I thought about that. We chose not to count them because we thought we might be intimidated by the number. The stack was, was, was significant, probably more than we've, more than we've had since I've been involved in the process.
It's been awesome.
So, well, congratulations to our Teacher of the Year finalists. Uh, that's an amazing accomplishment. And I think most importantly, it is validation, uh, that your hard work and your dedication does not go unnoticed. And whatever the outcome, uh, the teacher appreciation, you know, you will know that, that, uh, we know, that the work you do in your classroom is what keeps this going. So we appreciate that so much and that's a huge honor, so congratulations. At this time, the board will enter into the strategic discussion segment of our meeting. Uh, discussion topics are aligned to board priorities. And all guests are welcome to stay for this discussion, however we realize you're busy. Maybe you have some lesson plans, some papers to grade. So feel free to leave as needed. And as they're leaving and we get settled or resettled, we will move into 3.01. Uh, the board will participate in a dialogue, a dialogues focused on selected topics. Our topic tonight, um, as part of our, the board's professional development and our continuing education, we had the opportunity to attend the 2014 National School Board Association Conference last weekend. Uh, and so five board members, Mrs. Bush, Mr. Hosmer, Mr. Lee, Mr. Renner, and I, and Dr. Ritter. Um, and Mrs. Callen, I'm sorry. President, former President Callen, attended, uh, the conference. So we want to take a few minutes, uh, each to share our takeaways. I mean, we have many. And if we each share a takeaway of three minutes or so, we're looking at a few minutes. So try to, uh, I, I know we could probably talk for a long time about the great things we saw, but try to, uh, watch the time. So I, I have asked Mr. Lee if he would start our discussion this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations. Um, it was a really good conference. I don't know if it was a record conference as far as attendees, but it was, uh, as most of you know, um, NSBA is kind of reforming itself over the last couple of years and has really been trying to reinvent what they're trying to accomplish in their membership and, and providing services. And, uh, this was the, uh, I guess unveiling, if you want to call it, of the Stand Up for Public Education media campaign that, uh, NSBA is embarking on. And, uh, I know MSBA is grabbing hold and hopefully our district will grab hold somewhat with that. Excuse me. And really do some, uh, countering all the negative negativity that's out there with respect to public education, uh, rather than defend ourselves, let's get proactive and start, uh, telling our stories. Um, just talking about one, I love talking about one session since we don't have much time. And it's something that we have talked about as a board several times. I went to a, a session with, uh, Hurst Ullis Bedford, which is a district in Texas. Very, very strong, bald ridge, continuous improvement district. Um, I've been to a couple of sessions with them down in Dallas. Uh, but the thing that they were talking about is something that Ms. Bush and Ms. Palmer and I, we've talked about as far as board goals. And that was putting together some kind of ambassadorship program in the community for potential board members or, uh, community members to be educated about what's going on in the district. And, uh, as a cultivating ground for new board members. And we've done really well up to this point. Um, but I can tell you, based on the election last week, that's not consistent across the state. I think there was a record number of board candidates ran for seats last week. Uh, a lot of good people got, got defeated. Uh, so I think one of the things this board can do and one of the goals that we've talked about was, you know, how do we develop that one interest in board candidacy, uh, in the future so that when somebody comes onboard, uh, as a new member like, uh, Mr. Rosenberg, who's been involved, you know, how do we get those people connected? Uh, maybe it's not as a, uh, board candidate, maybe it's just an ambassador to tell our story. Um, that's when you make friends, when you need them out there for levies or bond issues and, and just getting the word out. And I thought it was a really, really good, uh, presentation. It's six meetings with people, um, they get nominated to attend some academy, a leadership academy. And so, uh, I, I just thought it was something this board may want to think about doing
And it's something that we have talked about as a board several times. I went to a session with Hearst Ullis Bedford, which is a district in Texas, very, very strong, balderish, continuous improvement district. I've been to a couple of sessions with them down in Dallas. But the thing that they were talking about is something that Ms. Bush and Ms. Palmer and I, we've talked about as far as board goals, and that was putting together some kind of ambassadorship program in the community for potential board members or community members to be educated about what's going on in the district and as a cultivating ground for new board members. And we've done really well up to this point. But I can tell you, based on the election last week, that's not consistent across the state. I think there was a record number of board candidates ran for seats last week. A lot of good people got defeated. So I think one of the things this board can do, and one of the goals that we've talked about, was, you know, how do we develop that one interest in board candidacy in the future so that when somebody comes onboard as a new member like Mr. Rosenberg, who's been involved, you know, how do we get those people connected? Maybe it's not as a board candidate. Maybe it's just an ambassador to tell our story. That's when you make friends, when you need them out there for levies or bond issues and just getting the word out. And I thought it was a really, really good presentation. It's six meetings with people that get nominated to attend an academy, a leadership academy. And so I just thought it was something this board may want to think about doing and setting as a goal to develop some kind of training program or a minor league training program for potential board candidates, developmentally, and get people out there that are really interested in thinking about it. Because a lot of times, all of us that got on the board the first time, kind of get to be a deer in headlights sometimes with all the stuff that's there, all the information that you're exposed to, and you kind of go, wow, this is a whole lot. And some of that can be done, and you hit the ground running a little faster than you would when you just kind of get on it. So I thought it was really good. I'm hoping to sit down with Ms. Palmer and Ms. Bush again as we start talking about goals for this coming year for our board and our OSR, Board OSR program. So it was a very good session.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mrs. Bush?
I went to a number of interesting sessions. The general sessions I thought were exceedingly interesting. But Andy, Mr. Hosmer's going to discuss that. It won't surprise many of you, if anybody, that I went to a program called 100% of elementary students reading on grade level. It's, the presentation was done by a school from, oddly enough, Springfield, Pennsylvania. Their demographics are a little bit different than ours, probably not as severe as ours. They're, but they were able to achieve it. It took them five years, but they were able to get every child reading at grade level. They also had 100% of their students attending college. It's a smaller school, 3,900 students. Their board members came from the private sector, from manufacturing, so they were about zero defects, do and measure institution. So, you know, you had that kind of scenario. But when you put it in the context, it works. One of the things they said was, if anybody, and one of the things they asked us when it started was, do any of you think, any of you not think that all children can read? And there were some people in the group who didn't. And they said they had to bring their whole group, their community, up to say, we believe this can happen, because it was truly a community effort. They also said to ask this, who wants to tell this kid, and they had a picture of a kid, that he will be the one who can read? Make it personal for that child and that person. You announce a goal publicly, you enlist the entire enterprise. They had their janitorial service, their bus drivers, their secretaries, everybody was involved, and in fact, in some way, was there to help assist kids in this whole process. They just told the superintendent, this is what you're going to do, and he went, but he made it happen. Instill confidence it needs to be done. They put on their business cards, on the signage up front in the building, on their banners, every child can read. They kept it in front of them all the time. They did it, they measured, and they improved. And here's the secret, they customized the education. We're saying all learning is personal. They did it. They accessed, they gave access to the students, they customized their learning experience, they measured, and then they repeated. They created an IEP for every student, and they held teachers and everyone else accountable. And they also said that class size in the first grade is very, very important. They kept that class size, 15 to 17 students. And they said, of course, leadership's important, but once you tell the public that's what you're going to do, you get the pressure from the community. So it was exciting. I understand that their, like I say, demographics are different, but I think this is something we need to shoot for, 100% students reading on grade level. I would say by third grade. They did it by fourth grade. I have all of their information that I'd be glad to share with you.
Thank you. And I think we probably would all be interested in looking at that. Mrs. Callen?
Yeah, I went to several sessions also, but the ones that I thought I would share, because I think it really applies to what's going on in our community with the Every Child Promise, was an initiative that is happening in Eau Claire, Wisconsin, where they, the school district partners with community partners and Head Start, and then they also have their own early childhood center to offer universal access to four-year-olds for early childhood. The difference is, is that the state of Wisconsin has made a commitment to fund early childhood in that state, and so the Eau Claire, Wisconsin, school district serves as the conduit of that funding. But I thought that the connection with the district providing some of the services, the partnership with Head Start, and then also their development of community partners with both private faith-based centers and private secular centers was certainly something that I will pass on to Dana Carroll and that committee. I asked about, you know, their memorandum of understanding and how they connect with those partners and what kind of commitment there is. So that was very helpful. And then just the other one that I went to was a session on a Parents Academy, and that was from actually a district that Dr. Ritter used to be in, Colorado Springs Academy 20. And it was pretty basic in terms of them offering certain types of academies. It's almost like every month, they offer a variety of different classes to their parents. They invite their community partners to come in, maybe do a CPR, you know, they do a nutrition, they talk about nutrition, just a variety of different things. But the one thing that struck me is they do do orientations at the beginning of the year for parents, both parents coming into the district, and then for any parent that feels like they need to have orientation. They have tech support there that's helping parents know how to access the Student Information Center or Information System. And they talk about their choice programs. That's a district that we've modeled ourselves after a lot with our choice programs. And the one key piece of data that they shared that I thought would be applicable to us is that they have seen an increase in their choice applications district-wide go up once they initiated that. So I thought that that was certainly something that we might look at in terms of not just having orientations for the separate choice initiatives each year, but maybe developing one district-wide so that everybody knows no matter what, how old your child is, that this is something that you could be working towards.
Excellent. Yep. Thank you. And we will skip Mr. Rosenberg. He was not on the board at that time, did not get to go to the conference.
Next year.
Next year, he can have twice as much time.
No, please.
To tell us why you picked him. So we'll move on to, and I'll come back to myself last, and then we'll have Dr. Ritter will conclude with his comments. We'll go to Mr. Ritter.
Well, I really wanted to come dressed as a WWE groupie. Because they happen to be in the city, but I thought if this would have been a regular meeting, I would have done that. But I could not do it with the seriousness of swearing. But I, if you haven't been to, we thought there were a number of people at the convention, but there were 70,000 people in that city going to a WWE, and they filled up the Superdome. My takeaway from that is there's a lot of crazy people out there. They were just enthusiastic, but I thought, what if they would have 70,000 people that enthusiastic about education? And they came from 27 different countries to watch this. I was just, that whole thing was quite an experience. That wasn't the best thing, but really added to the whole experience. It was just unbelievable. I did attend one session, which I usually don't go to those that aren't presented by school boards, but I did go to one on focus on the leader of the future. And two things came out of that. One, he did say, as leaders, nothing is small. And I thought that was important to us, it may seem, but as leaders, really, people bring things to us, it's not small. And he listed seven characteristics of leaders. The top one was character, which I think was important, but the second was courage. And I guess I failed because I didn't dress as a WWE. I didn't have the courage to come dressed that way. But I thought to be number two, that was important. And I think his point was that these are characteristics that you can develop, and we need to develop these, just like we do our words of the month for students, because all of us are leaders in certain situations. In certain situations, we all are leaders, and we need to have these characteristics if our country's going to succeed. His whole thing was about, and that we can teach these to our students. They can be taught. So I thought that was important. The other one I thought I would share was from Focus on Performance and Results on Accountability for School Boards. It came out of a school board in Connecticut. And I thought they said identifying real accountability, and we talked about the difference between real accountability and the false or feel-good accountability that we have sometimes. Does, if it feels good, we say we're accountable. And the other thing was to ask, there's all kinds of things, but one, to ask the right question. And I think the five things there is, what is the problem we're really trying to solve? Do we really even know what we're trying to solve? How are we defining success? What will success look like to us? When will we know that we've done it? And how are we going to measure it? And there are a lot of good things in there on responsibility and so on. But I think it is a good session, and both of the sessions I went to, you had table time to discuss with people from different places, and I found that extremely valuable. And so we talked about accountability for school boards, and there were people, I think, from, I guess, there were seven different states at the time, we talked about that kind of thing. And it, you know, it's a difficult thing to get your hands around, but I just think asking the right question and setting it up will help us do more than feel-good accountability in the end.
Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Hosmer?
A couple of things I was going to talk about. It seems like every time I go to NSBA, there's kind of a theme that emerges for me, and maybe it's because I try to stay on a certain track when I go to sessions that are all kind of similar, because I want to kind of focus on something. But it really seemed to me that the theme that jumped out to me was future, and not so much what's wrong with public schools, which we've heard a lot of that. But, you know, public schools are where they are, but where do they need to be? One of the presentations I went to that I enjoyed a lot was entitled The Seven Myths of Education: Seven Deadly Sins of the K-12 Education System, Costly and Ineffective Programs and Strategies. And this was presented, basically collated the research on a number of interventions that our schools use and that people intrinsically think work to improve student achievement. And the research was obviously not, you know, all one way or all the other way. But the presentation made me think that one of the things you've got to do as a board member, as a teacher, as an administrator, is you have to be able to have a flexible mind about these things. You know, everybody, you look at brain science, and the brain science tells us that people have conforming bias in their brains. We all do it. We all think we know the way something should work, and we see evidence that conforms to that, and so we're even stronger in that opinion. And you've got to, it's a difficult thing to do to have an open mind about conflicting evidence as it comes in. But the seven things that he mentioned in his speech that didn't work, class size reduction, homework, seniority in advanced degrees, technology, remediation, grade retention, extended school time, a number of studies on each of those things. Again, the information was not rock solid one way or the other, but it made me rethink some of my preconceptions about what works in education and what doesn't. And again, made me try to keep an open mind as to maybe whether I was thinking something that wasn't right. The other thing I thought was very interesting, I thought the two main presenters, at least for me, Tom Friedman and Ken Robinson, were, I thought, very similar. I thought they were wonderful, but they gave very similar presentations. And again, it was all based on the future, and it was all based on the fact that, you know, we're going to go into a society where our kids need skills, and they need an ability to access information, they need ability to take ownership of their education and of their futures. You know, Friedman talked about the fact that there's going to be jobs that are there for the highly skilled, that have flexible minds, and below that, not much, because of technology and automation, all these things. And so it got, and Robinson was very similar. And it got me to thinking that, you know, as we go forward with Common Core, any standardized testing we do, we've got to understand that while we strive to meet those, whatever those standards are, we cannot lose sight of the fact, what type of kids we want graduating from our schools. And if we want a certain type of thinker in our schools, then maybe we need to look at what our building looks like, what our classroom looks like, what our teacher looks like, what our, you know, what our community looks like. Because, you know, doing the same thing and just expecting you're going to get different results, obviously, isn't going to work. And if, in fact, you believe kind of what these guys were saying about what the future holds and what type of kid is going to excel and what type of kid is not, then we need to, I think, really keep that on the front burner. So, oh, one other thing that was very interesting, in types of the school, there was a, called the Independent Project in Massachusetts, a group of nine students, a school within a school, where basically those kids created their own curriculum, did everything, and met by themselves. And one of the things was they had to learn something they were passionate about. And a lot of it was, you know, finding kids' passion. And if they're passionate about it, then they'll go above and beyond learning about it. And they interviewed these kids, and there are video, and it's just one kid taught himself to play the piano. You know, another kid shot a documentary in the school. And then they would also have group activities where someone would have a question and say, let's figure out this question. It was fascinating. It was, you know, small groups, but again, it unleashed that passion the kids have, as opposed to kind of beating kids over the head with, you've got to learn this today, this tomorrow. So that's what I got out of it.
Thank you. One of the things that Thomas Friedman said that struck me as very interesting is that the students of the future will not be training for a job, they will be creating their own job. I thought that was a real interesting thing for us to think as we try to promote problem-solving, critical thinking, and for our students. But the conference, several conferences I attended, but the one that I really enjoyed was an excellent presentation. It was, the title was Board Behaviors Linked to Student Achievement. And this is by Dr. David Lee, University of Southern Mississippi. And he's just finished this research. It's cutting-edge, I think, one-of-a-kind study in which it, he said it's one-of-a-kind study, but anyway, the lead researcher, the individual that presented, Dr. Lee, is a former high school teacher, principal, superintendent, college professor, and a school board member, public school board member. So he comes at it from a number of different lenses. He did research in a five-state region. He sent out faculty and graduate students to not look at board policies and not look at board procedures, but to actually go to board meetings and observe board members and their behavior. And it was interesting that what they were looking for were these behaviors, and then looking to see if these districts were high-performing, student academic performance, or low-performing. And when they first started the research, he said they just did a survey of districts in this five-state region, and all reported back that they were high-performing districts. However, closer looking, closer look at those districts, 88% had schools in school improvement in their districts. So he said, well, we need to come up with another way to identify our low-performing and high-performing. So they used state data, student achievement, to help them to make that distinction. But anyway, he gave, throughout the presentation, just little teasers of some of the criteria on the rubric that they looked for as they went out and visited all these board meetings, sat through a board meeting. And I was very excited because I did see some things that I think we would probably got a yes, a check on of our board, and some things we can work on. And of course, we asked for, it was a very exciting presentation. He was a great presenter, and we asked for the study, which he indicated would be published this summer through the National School Board Association. So I kind of got the impression they're keeping that pretty close to the vest until it's published, because it may be a really big thing for school districts. So I did get his information, and he promised to send me a PowerPoint from his presentation, because that wasn't available on the website. So I will pass that out to you whenever I get that. But I thought that was very interesting, because I think that once the study is published, that it will assist us in our endeavors to do what we can as a board, because they did find a relationship between board behaviors and student performance in a district. So I think they'll be extremely researched to read. And at this time, Dr. Ritter, will you conclude with your comments about the conference? And then you can move into our next discussion update on free and reduced lunch.
Sure will. I gathered that it was really all about innovation, about the future. And we were part of that presentation. And Dr. Hackenworth and Ms. Jones did an awesome job, along with Ms. Callen, and had a packed room. And so really, a great response. I sat on a Ed Leader 21 panel and had a great response there as well. The takeaway, though, that I had from the keynotes, and by the way, I have Sir Robinson's book, latest book, and I'm about finished with it, very impressive, related to the element being in your element, and what it takes to be in your element, and the passion around that, and then really identifying and realizing that everybody has their own, and that's really what you're talking about, as far as being very diversified. One thing that I went to that I think is really going to be something I think the district's going to need to look at here in the near future, it's high schools. And it's, and I went to a PISA presentation. I don't know if everybody's heard, no, PISA, P-I-S-A. P-I-S-A. Yeah, it's the internet. P-I-S-A. Yeah, it's the international test that basically nations take, and then it's kind of like a food fight, who has the best results. But that's really a part of it, but that's not the PISA test. The PISA test that they talked about was actually a test where 15-year-olds in a high school, 78 of them, if you have a student population of about 1,500, randomly selected, would take this test. It's a rather very thorough test, but it would tell you the culture of learning you have in your system, and the level of rigor that you have in your system. Overland Park, I know there's been some bad news around Overland Park here lately, but Overland Park, all five high schools have done this. And it has helped kind of re-energize the teaching, and it called for far more integration, and really what I would call very transparent teaching in the school site. And so they use that to really drive the learning. And so where we're at in Springfield, I think this is something we may want to consider. It's $5,000 a high school, and you get a document of well over 150 pages. And it's very, very thorough. It's something I think we need to look into, have a conversation with Overland Park and see. But the results that they're getting from that, and really energizing and giving focus to the staff, it's not about the state test. It's about getting the information, the accurate information, and then moving forward. So, and it's rooted in, it tests all the variables, as far as social background, it tests the variables as far as the type of community, it goes into all of that just through that simple test. So anyway, it's an exciting thing. On that note, as far as the overall conference, I have to say, I've gone to a number of conferences, without question in my mind, this is one of the best. It was really done well. I know there's new leadership, and I think that's a main part of that. I think the keynotes really kept the focus on the, on what the theme was for the conference. But the presentations, and I've been to many of the presentations, I went to about seven presentations, and there was an overriding theme in there of making sure your foundation's in good shape. If your foundation is in good shape, making sure that's in place, then the innovation is automatic. And it's really kind of neat to hear that, see that. I also-
Dr. Ritter, could I just piggyback on that? And to thank Dr. Hackenworth and Ms. Jones for their presentation, we had a packed room, and I will say that we have been asked to take our show on the road. The woman who schedules the presentations for the Iowa School Boards Association meeting in November has asked if we would be interested in coming up and presenting. So I think that speaks highly of our staff and the work that they're doing on behalf of the districts.
Yeah, that's very good. On that note, stepping into just kind of a, just an update, and I know I sent it to all the board, all of you as board members, the free and reduced rate, and I sent you a 10-year free and reduced rate from 2004, 2005, to the present time. Across the district, we went from a district of 40.7% free and reduced to, this January's number being 54.6%. And so, to be honest with you, when you look at that, and you're looking at the neighboring districts, I see, I think they saw a very similar jump in their free and reduced rate as well. So it's not just unique to Springfield. I think it is very similar across the Southwest. So I do think that that is something that is very real. But I also sent to you information around the attendance for the district. I don't know if you saw that, but the attendance rate stayed pretty similar through those 10 years, but we did have a, thank you, we did have a record attendance, I think it was last year, at 94.91. But what's amazing to me is 25,000 students, and it fluctuates maybe a .2, a .3, and that's it, you know? And you talk to the sites, and you talk about the different interventions, but it stays pretty much in that area. So anyway, I wanted to share that as well. So anyway, that's our data, and I think we had a wonderful conference, and we have a lot of work to do. I should say you have a lot of work to do, if I can say it that way.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, comments for administration, for Dr. Ritter, on the free and reduced lunch counts from January 30, I understand, and enrollment? Yes, Mr. Hosmer?
I don't have a question. I have a comment, and it always jumps out at me. Elementary schools, we have seven elementary schools with a free and reduced rate of over 90%.
Right.
We have six elementary schools with a free and reduced rate of under 30%. Our middle schools range from 18% to 88%. Personally, I see, I see that, and I see big issues, looming issues. And, and we need to, we need to tackle that disparity. We can't change the overall number, that's beyond us, but we can seek to, to, you know, eliminate or modify the disparity, because having seven over 90%, six under 30%, I don't know that's a sustainable pattern.
Thank you. Anyone, Mr. Lee?
And to follow on that, Mr. Hosmer, a little bit. One of my concerns that I've had for many, many years is, we kind of get lulled in this 54% when our number is not 54%. It's way higher than that. When you look at schools like Reed or Pipkin that feed into Central, that, you know, they're at 70 and 80%, Central's 54. They're not getting rich when they get to Central, okay? The records aren't. The data's not there. So if we think our free and, what concerns me is we're missing out on resources to help these kids, because some of our data is not accurate. Because we're not at 54%. I totally believe that we're much, much higher than that with the data. And I don't know how to solve that problem, but it just seems like we've got, as Mr. Hosmer said, we've got so many opportunities here, and I just concern that sometimes some of these are falling through the crack, just because we're not, and like I said, I don't know the answer, but, and it may not be typical, I mean, we're probably not the only game in town that has that problem from a school standpoint, and I understand that. But still, I just think that we have a work cut out for us, for a lot of kids that maybe aren't getting resources, that they could get resources for with that. So, I mean, it is what it is, but I just think that we need to be careful that, I think it's a bigger problem sometimes than what our data shows.
I guess my comment is just that, based on Mr. Hosmer's comments and Mr. Lee's, this is not totally a district issue. And I think that we need to look at, I mean, these students are children of people that are working in our community, and how much those people get paid in those jobs is reflected in if their children are eligible for free and reduced lunch, where people choose to live in this community, and available housing. And those types of issues are also part of this picture. And so I think that it's imperative that, you know, this be, and I think that we're addressing this with the Task Force on Poverty, and some of the other issues that are being addressed, the Early Childhood Initiative. But this is just a snapshot of who our, who our students are. And I mean, if you look, these aren't new students that are coming to us that are poorer than they have been. In many cases, these are family situations that have changed, and children have become, you know, like one parent has lost a job, or if you look at where the big jump came, came right in the middle of recession.
Yes, it did.
So I think, you know, I think it's imperative that we do what we can to address those issues, but also be a part of the broader community discussion on what needs to happen.
At our kids' first discussion this morning, Annie, you were there, we had pretty good representation from across the community. And poverty, part of the discussion, but the main part of the discussion was mental health. And what was interesting is the discussions centered around a lot of mental health needs related to types of babies, form with drug babies, meth babies. So there's, seems to be a shift, and Susan Henderson was the one that pointed this out, a shift about four or five years ago, where the mental health kind of spiked. And so I think there's another piece, and really when we looked at the data today, the mental health issues are across the district. It's not in the poor neighborhoods. It's across the district. And so, so I think there's several things that we need to pay attention to, the community needs to pay attention to. We are here to serve, but also, and also keep the information in front of them. But they feel, they, the people that were there today feel responsible for that. So that's good. So, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments? Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll move into segment 4.0, 4.01, Public Comments. Do we have any comments this evening? Okay. So we do not have public comments this evening, but we do want to encourage members of the community to feel free to communicate with us about meeting agenda items during this timeframe. So we will move on to our information item. Information item 5.01, and that is on our internal audit status report. And Mr. Mueller?
Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to present to you a status report on prior audit findings. There's two reasons why I'm presenting this to you. The first is, internal auditing standards require that I create a system to monitor the disposition of results communicated to management. So by following up on previously issued audits and creating this report, that's my attempt to satisfy this auditing standard. And the other reason is, back when I created, I worked on creating my audit plan for this fiscal year, the board gave me the input that they wanted me to provide them with, or provide you with, an update on previously issued audit reports. So this accomplishes both of those. The three audits that I looked back over and followed up on are listed in the information item. The first is the audit of the bond financing and bond projects. The second is the audit of the expenditure accounts of the board, superintendent, and cabinet. And the third is the audit of the high school cash receipts and change funds. Overall, there were 18 findings that I presented in these three reports, and out of those, 12 out of the 18 have been implemented already. Five of the 18 are in progress, and one of the 18 has not been addressed yet. My plan going forward is, for the six that have not been implemented yet, I will include those on a future follow-up report. And my plan is to keep doing that until those have been either implemented, or there's been a communication to the board on the final disposition of those recommendations. I do, we'll answer any questions you have, and I know Dr. Harrell and Mr. Everest will also answer questions about the status on these recommendations.
Okay. At this time, do we have questions, comments from the board for Mr. Mueller? On audit findings, yes, Mr. Hosmer?
My understanding, the one that has not been done is reviewing or revising board policy, DJA, on the, on the change orders and changing job titles. Is that accurate? And is that something that is coming up to the board?
That is correct. That, DJA, and then also on page three, it references, under 2013 two audit finding number three, references DJF-R and DKR. Those three are going to be coming to the board. We were in the middle of going through the review with MSBA when these issues came, were brought to our attention. So to make it cleaner, we proceeded with what we already were doing, and are going to bring those separately.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Bush, do you have, was that a question?
No, that's a question, but it's a technology question.
Okay. Wow. We're getting some help from Mrs. Bush. I do have a question. This would have been on page four, if you printed this out, and this is, has to do with the audit of high school cash receipts and cash funds. And in your progress on implementation of responses, the word is that it's being developed in the Office of Curriculum Instruction, and additional fees have been identified. Management does not currently plan to incur course fees on the list for board approval. Can you talk about that a little bit? I guess what my question is, when will this process be implemented? And if there are fees associated with a course, will that be clear to students in the New Horizons, or the Student Handbook, or how do you plan to do? Because that is one thing, I have had several questions from parents, that their student rolled into class, got into class, and then was informed, beginning of class, there was a $10 or $20 fee that they were not aware of. So this is one that I have a question about.
I think, Dr. Harrell? Yep.
I'm going to start kind of with the base to it. It's really inappropriate to have a course fee. Now, there are some courses that may have costs involved around them based on materials. And a material fee is appropriate if that student receives something out of that particular course. And so the process that's being developed, instructional, curriculum and instruction, excuse me, is what is that process for a course that may need a materials fee, such as art, or, some of us may have remembered, way beyond that wood shop, those types of things, where a product is going to come out. It is appropriate to have a materials fee that could support some of those courses. What appears to have happened over the years is that a fee was charged for replacement, and that's really not an appropriate thing to do. So we went back and looked at some of those pieces. We eliminated those courses that had those types of costs associated with them, and those will be gone for the fall. And then any course, and specifically the one that pops to mind is art, that might have a materials fee, those developments are in process at this point. And yes, parents will be aware in the syllabus if there is a materials fee. And in fact, New Horizons for Art recognizes now that there's a materials fee.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Was there another part of that question?
Oh, you answered. Both of, one that would be implemented, and if a parent, or if there would be some type of publication allowing students to know that there would be a materials fee. And I think you answered that.
Another, I may mention, another piece that may seem a little bit confusing, is we are still working on aligning some of the costs that are involved with activities. And some of that just goes along with the nature of an event, such as, you know, you may incur an extra charge if your child plays basketball. You know, there may be something that child may need to get basketball shoes. There may be a fundraising that goes with that event, and I'm just using basketball as an example. Those sometimes will occur as well with courses that also have credit tied to them. So, such as band, or maybe choir. And so we are still in the process of getting that thinned out and aligned better, so that we have a more clear district-wide kind of expectation there.
So we would not expect a student to enter a class and be charged for paper?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Bush?
Is there some allowance for those families who can't afford the fee?
Which fee are we talking about?
Basketball or art, the materials?
Well, when we're talking about a materials fee, absolutely, there'll be, there'll be processes in place where that child can, you know, we have, many of the buildings have foundations built in with them, to where there's an opportunity for that child to request it. Oftentimes, that child can fundraise in those events as well. So yes. I can't always speak across the board, and this is one of the pieces we're working on, when we're talking about activities, because some of those processes come through the booster clubs. And so we're trying to work with them as well, as we make those, align those. It's going to be a little bit more of an involved process.
Yeah, I'd just hate for a child to miss out on something like that, and it's, if there's an opportunity for them.
Absolutely. No, we know it's too critical that they're involved, to be a part of the engagement. So everyone across the board, all the sites are working for that same purpose. But thank you for mentioning it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing that, we'll move forward to information item 5.02, SPS Employee Recognition Program. I think, Mr. McKenna, will provide that for us?
Good evening again. Hopefully, you'll find this discussion to be timely tonight in light of the great recognition that we've had the opportunity to be a part of. This presentation comes to you upon request of a couple of board members, as we've discussed, some of the things that we're doing around talent management. And if you recall from last year, we did an information item to the board on our talent management framework, which is the strategy that we use to attract the highest level of talent that we can in this community, in the school district, from the community, and also to retain that talent. And recognition is a component of that. I'm not going to go through each of these points for you on the slide, but recognition is important. I'd hope- I don't hope, I don't think we have to argue that with anyone. Hopefully, everyone will recognize that with me. There are some statistics there for you from the Society for Human Resources Management that really help us to identify the fact that turnover is detrimental to an organization. And when we recognize staff effectively, we can increase engagement, which just translates to a higher level of results, which for us means a better level of service and a higher level of certain service to students, which we hope translates to student achievement. For us specifically, a couple of really key drivers for the need to address recognition at the system level. The board will recall, in 2009, we underwent an analysis of our system from the Missouri, from the Excellence in Missouri Foundation, as we applied for the Missouri Quality Award. I'm used to the acronyms, and I try not to use them, and when I do that, I mess that up. But the Missouri Quality Review did provide us some great feedback about our system as a whole. And I've given you one of those quotes up there, "As an opportunity for improvement that was identified," in reference to our recognition program. There was no systematic rewards and recognition program in place. Certainly, we know that, you know, site by site, department by department, there is recognition that occurs. There was in 2009, there still is today. But at the system level, how are we making ourselves aware of that recognition? And how are we aware of the great things that our staff is doing in departments and programs throughout the district? Secondly, last year, for the first time, we conducted a system-wide engagement and satisfaction culture assessment in our system. So we asked every employee to complete an assessment, which helps give us insight into the level of engagement and satisfaction we have. We received about 3,300 responses to that survey, so an excellent response rate. And ultimately, we asked employees to respond to 92 questions on a one through five scale, where one is strongly disagree, and five is strongly agree. Each of those 92 questions are then correlated to a driver of engagement, which we call a dimension of engagement, and there are 15 of those. The lowest scoring question out of 92 is the one I've given you on the screen, which is, "I've received meaningful recognition in the past 10 days." So out of the 92 questions, this is the one that staff disagreed with the most, which actually still was a fairly strong score, 3.92 was the score, which is not quite agree. But we want, obviously, we want staff to agree with that statement, that they've received meaningful recognition in the past 10 days. These are the other dimensions of engagement that the 92 questions correlate to, and they're ranked ordered by mean here. So when you see those scores on the right, we're talking about the average score of all the questions for each of those indicators that tie to the indicator that's listed. So for example, all of the questions we ask that help us to measure engagement and inspiration and the vision of our district are listed in that first row. You can see again, the last dimension of engagement, the lowest scoring, is recognition. So our staff is pretty clearly telling us that when they, when they're asked to rank or to provide feedback on all the drivers of engagement and satisfaction, the one that we have the greatest opportunity to improve within is recognition. So how are we addressing this issue, and what are we doing to try to make some traction, some positive traction on this issue? First of all, we really approached this from a question of how are we going to align our expectations for staff with the way that we recognize staff in our system? And for us, the clear answer was the learning model. If we have a clear direction for staff on the way that we accomplish work, and we provide them clear processes and capabilities that we expect them to use every day as they do their job, we ought to align expectations and recognition to those processes and capabilities. So that's the first thing that we set out to do, and we set out to gain that buy-in and that direction from the Learning Model Steering Team, which is a cross-functional team designed to strengthen the deployment of the learning model throughout our workforce and throughout our school community. Secondly, the total rewards philosophy, and we kind of covered this briefly last year, but this is just the idea that we all hope and recognize that the greatest reward you can achieve for working for a public school district is the intrinsic reward. But we know that people also need a paycheck. They also need some extrinsic rewards as well. So the total rewards philosophy is just a combined philosophy that helps us to present all of those rewards in one package to staff. The idea is, there's more than just your paycheck. There is your paycheck, but also benefits, and indirect rewards, even things like employee discounts that make a difference, and then also recognition, like we're talking about today. We, as we made that adjustment to our process, we hired a total rewards manager. She's in the room. Jana Roberts is back there, and she can wave. Jana comes to us with a great deal of experience in this area. She also manages our benefits program, our compensation program, rewards and recognition. So the same person is driving those types of improvements within our system. Also, as I mentioned already, we recognize the value of decentralized recognition, but we really want to centralize it eventually, so that we can get good data from that recognition, so that we can also recognize the appropriate people at the district level as well, and not just keep it at the site level. So this is what we came up with, and I'm going to begin by thanking our IT department, because what you're about to see is far beyond my level of expertise. So we wanted this process to be fairly quick and easy, and because, you know, the idea is that if it's quick and easy, that we'll get more recognition happening throughout the district. So this is a website, and this is linked to several other webpages throughout the district. It's also on our homepage. The first question we're just going to ask is, are you a district staff member or not? And the reason for that is that we, the workflow is slightly different, depending on the type of employee, or type of individual that you are. And I'm going to try to tell it that I'm a staff member, and because this is a public computer, it may not recognize me, and it doesn't. So I'm going to, I'm going to pretend to be a community member here. So this is the form that we developed, again, with the help of our IT department. So it begins by, you know, thanking the person for taking the opportunity to recognize one of our staff. It asks them to complete some basic information about the staff member that they're recognizing, and where they work, that kind of thing, and also to provide their own information. The next thing it does, and this is the same basic principle that we use with our employees who are recognizing colleagues, so if I would have clicked that, "I am an employee of the district," I would see a very similar form. It asks the submitter, the person recognizing someone, to tie whatever it is that they're recognizing to one of the processes, or multiple processes or capabilities of the learning model. So again, we're asking, you know, what did you see? Did you see somebody really having high expectations of themselves or others? Did you see someone building quality relationships, thinking critically, or communicating effectively? They check the appropriate boxes, and if they need to, you know, a little more definition, that's available for them here as well. What we like about this is that not only does it help us to tie the quality performance to a process or capability of the learning model, it also further embeds the model within our school communities. So if I'm an employee, and I'm completing this about the teacher across the hall, I am not only tying it for that teacher, I'm also learning myself about those processes and capabilities, and more clearly making connections between real, everyday working experiences and one of the processes and capabilities. And then I just enter a narrative here about what I saw that I believe deserves recognition, and hit submit.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Well, I was looking around the website. A couple days ago, I found this. So I had had several comments about an individual within the district, very positive. So I did this already.
Okay.
Submitted it. And I found it very interesting, because I went to the bottom and filled out the comment, the open comment part first, and gave examples of what I know about that person, and what I've been hearing. And then it made it very easy for me then to look at that and go back, and then click those things it's aligned to. So it was very simple and very easy to do, and I would invite all of you to, you know, try it, try it out. It's neat.
Good, good. Thank you for that. So this is what happens after I click that submit button. First of all, that information goes to Human Resources, and we're just reviewing those at a high level to make sure that they are, that the form is, the process is going correctly and being used effectively. The next thing is, after we hit the next button, through the magic of IT, the appropriate people are notified. So the employee themselves that's being recognized gets an email that says, "One of your colleagues or someone in the community has taken the opportunity, taken a moment to recognize your great work. Congratulations." And then it summarizes what they said. Those comments that were inserted on the form are related to the employee. Also, an email goes to the employee supervisor and says, "One of your employees has been recognized by a colleague or a member of the school community. Please take a moment to congratulate them or thank them for their hard work." I'm sorry, was there a question from someone? The metrics that I've mentioned there, so again, using the system, from the IT standpoint, we're able to quickly and easily get the communication to everybody. We're also able to get those metrics at the district level. So we know what processes and capabilities we are seeing traction within, which ones do people maybe not have as clear an understanding within, and we need to maybe provide more examples of the type of performance that would align to critical thinking, for example, if we're not seeing a lot of recognition in that area. It is accessible anywhere by anyone, so that you can access it just as I did as a member of the public. So what do we do with that information after it goes through the process? We have sort of this tiered approach to recognition, and it begins with what you just saw, that recognition workflow. There is a great amount of value in just that step alone. When someone takes the time to complete that process, hit the submit button, and then the employee receives that electronic pat on the back to say, "Someone has really seen you doing great work, and here's what they've said about you." They know their supervisor got the same email, and the supervisor goes by and says, "Hey, I got a notice that someone took the time to do that. Thanks for doing a great job." So even if the process stops right there, there is already great traction aligned with our learning model, that helps employees to recognize each other, and the community to recognize our staff. We still take all of those forms, electronic forms, every month. We go through those in the HR department, and we select some additional recognition to occur. So this happens, staff members of the month. We select staff members, administrators, and teachers to receive monthly recognition, and then work with the communications department to send out e-blasts, and a little higher level of notoriety for those that sort of rose to the top of the, of the monthly recognitions that occurred. The next thing, the next higher tier, is what we call a Making a Difference Award. This is new this year, and we've partnered with Great Southern Bank to sponsor that, because there is a financial gift that the employee receives for receiving that award. There's 25 of those awarded per year, and again, through the same process, that e-recognition workflow, we're just really selecting the ones that really rise above, stand ahead of the crowd, and they receive that Making a Difference Award. They get a $50 gift from Great Southern Bank in the form of a gift card. They get a mug and a pen, a few other little nice things. They get a visit from the superintendent, myself, and a member, the appropriate member of cabinet. So if they consider that to be a good thing, then I guess there's, you know, three or four gifts that they get. And that's really fun, and I've got some pictures that I'll show you here in just a moment, because it's a surprise. They don't know that it's coming. We just walk into their classroom, catch them off guard, or walk into their office, depending on the type of person we're talking about. And then the last is the of the year. This is under expansion currently. The one that we have there is the Teacher of the Year program. Looking for sponsors there to expand that, and we'll talk more about that in just a moment. Community partnerships make these types of things happen. We don't use public dollars to buy the gift cards and buy the tumblers and that type of thing, and that's something that we've talked about over, over time, but something that we feel more comfortable pursuing through partnerships and sponsorships, which are really interchangeable terms for the same thing. We're looking for a community partner to give us some money to help us with this. Great Southern Bank, as I mentioned, does do the Making a Difference Award. Mercy Health Systems and Missouri State University, both are helping us with the Teacher of the Year program, and we are looking for other partners who would be interested in sponsoring other of the year recognitions that occur. Here's just some preliminary results for you. This is our first year using the e-recognition workflow. So 1,200 submissions. Those are 1,200 people that received a notification that someone took notice of their work, and 1,200 supervisors who hopefully took the time to go by and say, "Hey, I received that same notification." Of course, we are doing the staff members of the month being recognized, and then we've done the first round of Making a Difference recipients, and I've got a few pictures here. This is Jenny Cronky from Bowerman, and so as you can tell from her face, she was a bit surprised to have us there. The great thing about this is that the principal, and you know, when we do this, we really rely upon the principal to know what's most appropriate for their staff. She brought in Ms. Cronky's husband and parents, and so they were there as well, and there were lots of people crying and all kinds of things. It was, it was a very touching moment for her and for her family as well. This is Rick Franklin. He's the head custodian at Reed. We received several nominations from Mr. Franklin, and so that's just kind of a neat shot of the students congratulating him. Again, we brought him into the choir room to fix something, quote unquote, and we were there to recognize him. And this one is Jennifer Jackson from Twain, an elementary teacher at Twain. Again, just a great opportunity for us to sort of surprise people, catch them off guard, and provide them kind of a on-the-spot recognition for a job well done. So again, our next steps, expansion of sponsorships. We're looking to do that. Continuing sponsorship, or partnership with our internal teams, IT and communication, to, again, really deploy the e-recognition. We'd love to see more than 1,200 next year. I actually took a look at the trend by month, and then to see kind of the fluctuation in how many submissions we have each month. So, and there's the standard dips you would expect to see over holidays and breaks and that type of thing. But we have some room, we think, to improve there as well. To non-employees, we've actually made that change already. You've seen that now. That was a late development last week, so we now have this process available to everyone, and I believe it's probably available by the time that you completed, otherwise you wouldn't have been able to do that. So that's great. And then we want to monitor trends. So we want to, again, see where we're seeing strong levels of recognition, where we're not, so we can work in those areas. We want to trend it by process and capability of the learning model, so that that can inform the work of the learning model steering team, and help them to further deploy the model throughout the system. So again, that's just a high-level update for you, and it's also my hope, I'll reiterate Dr. Frederick's comments, that if you see something that makes you proud, please take them, an opportunity to go online and recognize staff for their hard work. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions at this time? Yes, Mr. Hosmer?
It's, it sounds fascinating. I like the, I like the idea. I would suggest, if it is a quick fix, that, I think Dr. Frederick made a good point, and that's the first thing that I thought when we started through that, is like, oh my gosh, what does this align with? And I think if you did kind of have that up top, and then it flowed down from there, maybe an easier way to do that. The other, the question I have, do we have an app, SPS?
We have a mobile website.
Do we?
We do not. We are currently discussing the feasibility of that.
And that's all I know, app. I don't know anything else, but I know that, I know that.
We need one, whatever the heck it is.
Whatever it is, by God, we need it. But so.
I think that's the next quote for the headline on our.
So much of, so much of what people do now is done on their smartphone, and, you know, I can, you know, the times that you're on your laptop or your computer, well, nobody's on their computer anymore. So it, you know, I was trying, as you were doing this presentation, I tried to, you know, get on my smartphone to kind of take a look at it, but, but I think that'd be a great way for, for people, everybody's got a smartphone, and if you had an app that, that was easy to manipulate, it'd be a great way, I think, would, would, you'd have a lot more people accessing it and utilizing it, so.
Very good. Any other questions, comments?
I have a question. What's, what's the magnitude, the financial magnitude of the partnerships you're looking for?
Let's see. Great Southern Bank's sponsorship is 1,600, 1,700. The teacher, that's the Making a Difference, so that's kind of our quarterly level. The annual recognition that we, that Mercy and Missouri State provide is more significant than that, and I don't have those dollars, their, the foundation does that component of the recognition, so they would have that. But, you know, it's not a huge, huge commitment, but it is something that we can hopefully get some traction around, because we think that's the best way to approach that. Spending of those dollars.
Sorry. Any other questions? I have one. Mr. McKenna, on your slide on recognition tiers, and your top one of the year under expansion, will that be in alignment with the SPS Foundation's Teacher of the Year, or is this a separate recognition?
It's a separate recognition. The Teacher of the Year recognition happens at our Teacher Appreciation banquet, and so that event is very focused on teachers, as it should be. What we've initially thought about is how we can get the largest group of peers together for whichever segment of the workforce we're talking about. So if it's an Administrator of the Year, how do we gather, or when do we gather administrators together? We have an end-of-the-year celebration, for example. Those types of things would probably make the most sense, depending on the segment of the workforce we're talking about.
So this would really not be competition, or competing with that event? This would be a separate?
Correct. And I don't know at this point, there's no plan to make it an event. I mean, you know, to have an event just for this recognition, it would probably be partnered with an already existing gathering of folks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Let's move on to section six. First of all, let me ask the board, does anyone want to take just a short break, or you want to keep moving? We still have several things to go. Keep moving? Is that consensus? Yes? Okay. Action item for vote. Now, the purpose of a study session is to discuss agenda items and allow time for the board to seek additional information, but, and voting on agenda items is typically conducted at our regular school board meeting, and our regular meeting will be April the 29th. However, we do have one action item that requires a vote at this evening's meeting. So Mr. Wendt is here to talk to us about the Glendale High School Computer Lab relocation.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Ritter, it's my pleasure to present this action item to you this evening. As we talk about the relocation of the computer labs at Glendale High School, this is actually a component of the 2013 bond project and renovation work that is currently taking place there. To give you a little understanding of the scope of the work involved, some of it involves work, renovation work to be completed in the rooms 101, I'm sorry, 102 and 106 that the labs will be relocated to, which includes removing of existing cabinets, some masonry bases, sinks, waste piping, and gas piping. It'll also provide and install new split units, which is additional air conditioning in those spaces for computer labs, and involve some electrical demo of some unused branch circuitry as well. So there's a bit that goes into that. We advertised this project on the March 15th and 16th. We put, we actually received an open bids on April 1st at 3:00 PM. On Attachment A, you'll see that there were three bidders for the project, and the lowest responsive bidder is highlighted there, and that was Bales Construction, and that's at $76,000. The $76,000 was in line as we analyzed the scope of the work for that type of project, and it is within the overall Glendale High School Bond Project construction budget. It is our recommendation that the board authorize as a superintendent or his designee to approve Bales Construction base bid for the total of $76,000 for the Glendale High School Computer Lab relocation package.
Do we have questions or comments for Mr. Wendt?
I move to approve.
Okay. So hearing none, we have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Bush, motion, and Mrs. Callen, the second. So at this time, we will take a vote on a motion that the board authorized as a superintendent or as designee to approve Bales Construction in the base bid for a total of $76,000 for the Glendale Computer Lab relocation project. So please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ready to move forward. We're in Section Seven, Action Items for Separate Consideration. We have several items for consideration this evening. First, 7.01, Revision of Board Education Policy, BBBA, Board Member Qualifications. This is the second reading.
Dr. Ritter?
Are there any questions, since this is the second reading? I know, Tim, you're new, but it's really just responding to statute.
Very good. We'll move on to 7.02, Proposed Rates for Fees for the year, academic year 2014-15. Mr. Chotis?
Thank you. Each year at this time, we bring to the board the proposed rates and fees for the coming school year. Attached are those proposed rates and fees for the 2014-15 year. I'd like to point out a couple of things. One, that the district has adopted the IRS allowance for mileage reimbursement, and also that the rate that the district charges for the pay-to-ride transportation is set by DESI, and it's based on the district's actual eligible costs. Any changes are identified in red on the attached schedule, and we ask that the board approves the rates and fees for the 14-15 school year as shown.
Yes, any questions or comments, Mr. Hosmer?
The pay-transportation piece, Steve, is there any possibility of breaking out free versus reduced, or is that all set by DESI?
On the...
Free and/or reduced meal eligibility fee is, is the same whether it's free or reduced?
That is correct, yes.
Is there any way to break that out, to have separate fees for free versus reduced? Does that make sense?
I am, I'm not aware of that. We'll check into that and get back with you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Next, 7.03, Granting of Perpetual Sidewalk Easement, Sunshine Elementary. Mr. Chotis?
This action item before you is for granting of an easement. We were approached by the city regarding some constru, I'm sorry, some traffic congestion on Sunshine Street by Sunshine Elementary. The city approached us to see if we would be willing to grant some easement to allow them to actually widen Jefferson. On one of the attachments, you see, I rotated this so I can put north at the top of the map for myself, but you can actually see Sunshine across the bottom of the diagram and then Jefferson on the side street. So what their hope is to actually get the traffic off of Sunshine and actually be able to queue up additional traffic, which would queue up roughly 48 vehicles, which would help from a safety standpoint and traffic congestion. What this would do is, as they work in the right of way, pushes the sidewalk onto our property, and that's what they're looking for to, for us to grant that easement. The city will actually fund this project, and that's what they're looking for us to give the easement for. This is a very similar project to working with them related to what happened down by Jeffries Elementary to get some of the traffic. They widened scenic to get some of the traffic off there as well.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Wendt on this situation?
How long does the perpetual last? A long time?
Quite a while.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
7.04, Amendments to Health Plan. Mr. McKenna, again?
This is the last time, I promise. We bring to you this evening adjustments to the health plan. As a reminder to the board, we do periodically review the health plan to ensure that it's consistent with legal requirements and that it's also meeting the needs of the district from a financial standpoint and our employees from a health standpoint. So the changes that you have tonight are for an effective date of July 1, 2014, and primarily the result of financial solvency to the health plan. So as, again, a reminder to the board, Mr. Chotis and his team are responsible for the financial analysis of the health plan and ensuring that the Health Benefit Trust account itself remains solvent to the extent that we can remain an active payer of the claims of our employees. Myself and my team work together with Mr. Chotis and his departments to craft a plan, the plan itself, that achieves the financial condition that we need it to achieve. So the adjustments that you see attached to the action item are changes to the plan that result in additional revenue to the plan that would offset what Mr. Chotis projects to be a shortfall over the 12 months beginning July 1, 2014. Those are listed in the attachment, and the fiscal note is fiscal note number one. We projected in the 12-month period beginning on the July 1 date that $257,000 annually would be the result, an increased revenue for just those planned design changes. The second component is an adjustment to premiums for dependents, spouses, and children, and families covered, of employees that are covered under the health plan, and retirees, excuse me, covered under the health plan. The second fiscal note that you see there indicates that $285,000 annually, again, beginning July 1 and proceeding through the year, is what we anticipate to receive an increased revenue to the health plan as a result of those premiums. If I walk you through, beginning with the premiums, since that's what we're talking about, just to clarify for you the difference, what's changing. The employee-only premium is still paid 100% by the Board of Education, and under the proposal that we bring to you tonight, that would continue to be the case, but we are proposing that the board increase its contribution for each employee from $425 monthly to $460. And then the out-of-pocket expense is what's listed under that employee column for each tier of coverage for spouses and children and families. The proposal for employee and spouse is 365 per month. That is currently 343. The proposal for employee and child is 270 per month. That's currently 255. Employee and children, the proposal is 320 per month. It's currently 285. And employee and family, the proposal is 480, and that's currently 447. So those premium increases range per month, a difference of between $14.50 to as much as $35 per month increase. And it's worth noting that as we look at our benchmark districts, the districts that border us geographically and the 10 largest school districts in the state, we're still well under the average in terms of premiums for all of those, all of those levels of coverage. Those premiums that you see listed are the prices that would be out-of-pocket for the employee each month, and as a reminder to the board, retirees that choose to participate in the health plan pay the employee premium, but they also pay the employer share. So to determine how much retiree would be impacted, you would add the employer column and the employee column together to get the monthly premium amount for retirees. Working backwards, if we look at the amendments to the health plan that's in the attachment, I'll just quickly walk through these with you. The adjustments here are to the hospital deductible and emergency room deductible. These are just when an employee has an inpatient hospital stay. There is a deductible attached to that, or an ER visit, there's a deductible attached to that. The hospital deductible is currently 100. The proposal increases that to $200. The emergency room deductible is $50. The proposal increases that to 100. And then in the prescription drug section, deductible per person and per family are currently 50 and $100 respectively, and the proposal increases that to 100 and $200. And for brand name drug prescription fills, there's currently a $10 copay plus 20% of the cost of the drug. The proposal is to increase that to $20 plus 20% and not changing generics. Also, at the bottom of that attachment, there is an additional new section, which is a spousal surcharge. That just means that if a employee chooses to cover their spouse under the plan, and that spouse has coverage available to them through their employer, that we would charge a $50 surcharge per month for them to be on our plan because they're choosing to be on our plan as opposed to being, as a part of coverage that's otherwise available to them. So again, you know, these changes are in an effort to increase the solvency of the health plan and to attempt to bring that into line so that it can be long-term, it can be sustainable on a long-term basis. Those fiscal notes, again, are for annual coverage, and our proposal is for that to be effective July 1, 2014. And I'm happy to answer any questions. This is first reading, and so we'll ask the board to vote at its regular meeting.
Okay, any questions from, yes, Mrs. Callen?
How many employees do we cover under the health plan?
We cover about 3,500 employees.
3,500. And so in terms of the employees that do all, the employees that are covered under the retirement system, the state retirement system, any contribution that the district makes or any increase in our commitment gets credited to them as total compensation, right?
Correct. For both, for all employees that are either on the peers, the non-certified, or the certified, anything, any employer-paid benefit, which also includes our life insurance that the district provides, long-term disability insurance, and the employer's share of the health plan.
Okay, so just in terms of what we're looking at, healthcare, $35 a month increase, right, for, is that...
Yes, for the, which is what the district is going to pay.
Multiplied by 12, which is $420 a year, so that's $420 a year per employee that we're going to be contributing.
Correct.
And then, you know, roughly, that's about $1,400,000, which is our increase, which is what we as a board or a district would be making to our employees just with the, to ensure that they don't have to pay anything out-of-pocket for their coverage.
Correct.
And that would be in addition to anything that we would choose to increase, like a step or a cost of living or...
Correct.
Just, I mean, I think that that's important to realize that when we're dealing with the money that we have to allocate, what we have to allocate goes to salaries and it goes to benefits, and benefits are increasingly a big, big chunk of that, especially healthcare.
Very true, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, I have one, Mr. McKenna. Of our retirees that will be, will see an increase, so will they be getting a letter or how will they be notified?
Yes, we'll, after the board approves that, we'll communicate with them by letter. And then we'll also have, of course, a mass communication to our employee population, and then there'll be a new open enrollment period that will allow people to come in or go out of the plan as a result of these changes prior to the implementation in July.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Yes, Mrs. Bush?
It may not be the question for you. It looks like a proposal within next year's budget is to also have a major contribution to the healthcare trust out of the budget, just to flat, or is that the number that's this?
That is the number that's in there.
Okay, it's coming out, okay.
Correct.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hey, moving on to, if you have any questions on the action items for separate consideration, please get those questions to Dr. Ritter, as these items will be placed on the consent items for vote at the board meeting April 29. Moving on to eight, action routine. We have several routine action items pertaining to minutes from previous board meetings, personnel elections, promotions, and terminations. At this time, do I hear any recommendations to modify minutes? Okay, good. Hearing none, we will move on to Agenda Item Nine, Public Comments to Address Non-Agenda Items, and I don't think we have any this evening. Okay? We do not. So we will now move to our Section 10, Comments from the Board, and at this time, do we have legislative updates or issues to be discussed by members of the board? We usually do, so.
I would just update the board on just two items. One is the tax cut bill that the Senate passed, 509, that they passed, which is the 253 of this year, some last year. The House was supposed to pass it today. They didn't get to it, so they're probably going to pass it tomorrow. Somewhere between 600 and 800 million cut, which will be general revenue. So our fight that we had last year with 253 now will start probably tomorrow. And what's unique about this is, if you remember, last summer, we had all summer to fight 253 with a veto session. Well, the timing is really good now for this to pass because the governor's only got 15 days to either veto it or not, which means they will vote in session to either override the veto or not. So instead of having three months to fight it, we have 15 days to fight it. So there's a lot of effort going on right now out there with coalition, Missouri Coalition for Future, and so timing is really critical, and I, now, to be honest with you, the biggest fear I have right now with that one is the fact there'll be so much energy and effort for that bill, what's happening over here in the sidelines that we don't know about, that will get passed through, that all of a sudden we wake up and all of a sudden we've got burned, it's the same thing, or something like that. So that's a major problem we've got out there right now.
Is there any difference in this than last year?
It's different than last year. I don't know that it's... It's still pretty bad. It's really bad. We thought we had some concessions in there with the governor and the leadership in the Senate. Well, they decided not to put those in there with some triggers that would kick, that wouldn't kick in the tax cuts until certain things were, revenues were at a certain level, but those didn't get put in or got put in differently. So it's another 253, and I have no idea how to tell you what will happen in an override session, but I think that my money's probably on the House passing it, and then the shouting begins. The second one that I would just comment on is the House bill that got passed, 1490 on common court, that just passed out of the House to basically delay common court for a year to look at it. I don't know what will happen with that, but that's, that's the plan right now that they're looking at. I would suspect that that will probably get some traction. Good things and bad things about that with that. Good things and bad things about that, with that. One of, one of the things I would make sure this board realizes is that, because you're hearing a lot about common court and Indiana voted against it and all that and put in their own standards, Indiana standards, keep in mind, ninety-five percent of those standards are common court. All they did was change the label and renamed it. And so, so far, everybody that's voted common court out and have got new standards, it's the same thing. It's just by, put a new, new and improved, new cover. And so I think some misleading information out there about, hey, this will be different, it will be that, and all these other states that are doing this, it's just a new cover. It's not, it's not changing anything substantial. And, you know, the tax cut bill is still one of those things that, you know, how far down do we want to fall, Kansas into the tubes? And, you know, right now, Kansas is a poster child for policy, and they're hurting so bad. Their, their education funding is hurting so bad and their economic is hurting. I mean, it's just terrible. But, I don't know, we'll see. Those are the two big ones.
Common court change, delay, is that for the testing piece or the implementation?
Implementation.
And can they require schools not to implement it? I thought they were about local control. Excuse me, I was just confused there.
It's really a good question.
I don't think they can, I don't think they can require.
They can't, they can't tell us that we can't certainly implement.
They can't have a statewide standard, I think. I really shouldn't answer that. I should check it up, but I don't.
Okay, so just to clarify, Hasville, fourteen ninety?
That's the common court.
Passed to delay implementation of the standards as a state?
One year.
For one year. So that does include the standards implementation and the curriculum?
Assessment.
An assessment or just assessment?
We'll delay everything.
Okay.
But, but we'll put together a statewide coalition to develop new standards. Missouri learning standards, I don't know what it'd be called, but it'll be, it's, I agree, it's a waste of resources, but so many districts have already gone down the road so far. Trying to unscramble the egg will be a significant cost in changing direction, so.
Okay, thank you.
Good news.
Anything else? I know, we need to.
You have Mr. Ransum and Mr. Ellis here.
Yes, yes, I'm aware of that, so.
Is he here?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay, um, let's, let's move on. Oh, Andy, I'm sorry, did you have a question or comment?
Oh, I have a quick comment.
Thank you.
As I was sitting over here, I realized that for eight years I've sat in this position, I've looked at Jerry, and Jerry has always led the legislative update. And in those eight years, I can count on probably my left thumb, the times that Jerry said, hey, there's a good bill for education coming out of the House. We need to support it and get it passed. I'm serious about that. And that's a, that's a frightening concept that, that we come here time after time after time after time after time, and all we hear is, here's another one, we got to fight back. Here's another one, we got to fight back. And boy, it, it frustrates you as a board member that all you're doing is, is trying to bat back really bad public education ideas. And, and I'd like for Jerry to change his tone and start talking about good, good bills.
And even worse.
I would love to.
Even worse that our local delegation ignores our community and our voice and votes along party and ideology all the time. And that, to me, is almost more disappointing than the tenor at the state level.
Thank you. Let's move on into future issues. We do have one large future issue to talk about, but I will quickly just remind for future issues that we have an extended budget study session on Monday, April the twenty-first, from two to four here at Craft, so don't forget that. Second thing, the Missouri School Board Association Regional Spring Meeting will be held in Branson, Missouri, at Buchanan Elementary, and that's on April twenty-second at six o'clock. So clear your schedules for the week. We also have the Teacher Appreciation Banquet on April twenty-first at six o'clock, and that is a wonderful event. I hope everyone can attend. And then the last, under our future issues, as one of the state's outstanding boards of education in teaching, learning and assessment, MSBA has requested that Springfield Public School Board participate on a panel discussion at the Leadership Summit at Antera. That would be Friday, June sixth and seven, but this particular session would be on June sixth from two to three thirty. And the request is for one or two board members to plan a fifteen-minute presentation and then be able, be available for a twenty to thirty-minute question and answer session. MSBA has asked for reply from us by the end of the week. It's, I know it's a short time, but they're in their planning phase and they need names of presenters. So if you are interested in being on this panel, serving on the panel, please let Kathy know before Friday, and it would be really great if you could let her know by Thursday so then we can get in contact with MSBA by Friday, no later than Friday, if you're interested in that. And like I said, they want one or two, and so we'll see who volunteers, and we might have to do a little draw, short straws and see who goes. Yeah, so, okay, great. Let's move to ten point oh-two, other. The Westport Gymnasium naming ceremony was held April fourteenth yesterday at Westport K eight. The new gym there was honored, was named in honor of Coach Alan Potts, who's a coach and teacher at Studi Middle School for, I think, thirty-two years. It was a wonderful ceremony, well-attended. It was very heartwarming and it was a nice event. Then also, I would like for you to please refer to your items attached to your board docs regarding the change in the Missouri statute, which governs the length of terms of our district's board service. We have Mr. Ransome Ellis with us this evening to provide information related to this change and answer questions because the outcome we need this evening before we leave is the consensus on which direction we want to go with this as a board. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure you all know, but I'll start with the baby steps, that there are three types of school districts in the state. There's seven director districts, urban districts and metropolitan districts. There's a slight difference in things that each have or responsibilities or board comp, composition, things like that. But we are an urban school district. And as an urban school district, generally in the statutes, urban school districts have boards that are seven in, in number, but they serve for six years. Approximately nineteen ninety-eight, the board came to the conclusion that it was very difficult to attract people, business people and others, to commit to a six-year term. And in an effort to try and get as many people into the process, they went to legislature and made an effort to try and get a change, to get an exception. And there are exceptions throughout the statute that we really can't say they were for a particular school district, but they were for a particular school district. In, in our case, the exception is one sixty-two, four eighty-one point four, and it says, in any school district in any city with a population of one hundred thousand or more inhabitants which is located within a county of the first classification, that it joins no other county of the first classification, the term shall be three years for board members. So as of nineteen ninety-eight, the elections in nineteen ninety-eight, the board started electing board members for three-year terms, and it's been that way since. Now, that's all fine and good, but as of January one nineteen, two thousand and fifteen, Christian County will become a first-class district. And the exception as written here will not apply anymore to this district. I don't think it applies currently to any other district. There are other exceptions in this, in this area for, like Columbia and Lee Summit, I think both have exceptions that are applicable to them. There are no other exceptions that apply to Springfield. So it is our opinion that if you don't get a change to this statute, and I think the fix is probably pretty easy, you can simply say something to the effect of, joined by not more than one, I mean, I say that to Mr. Lee, not, it's simple, but, I mean, the wording is simple, the wording change is simple. Now, I understand that Senator's looking at one issue as to whether or not there's a grandfathering of this, of this process by virtue of the fact you get it, you can't, you don't lose it. I don't agree. I don't think there's a grandfathering. And the statute that he's referencing is one, section one point one hundred, which basically says, our interpretation of the fair, the fair reading of that statute is that if you write a statute that's applicable to a particular public entity, specifically a city or a political subdivision like a school district, that there are only two kinds of other bodies that can get that, the one that you wrote it for in essence, and anybody that comes after that, that then meets the requirements of that statute. So applying that to the statute we have now, it was written for the Springfield School District, not really, but it was, and we ended up with it with the three-year terms. And any other school district that came, comes along that meets those criteria will be eligible to be an urban school district. But it doesn't say anything about whether or not that grandfather's the school district in. The problem, if you don't make a change here, is perhaps nothing, but you're going to have to opt at the next election, that would be the two thousand and fifteen elections, as to whether or not you're going to have three-year candidacies or six-year candidacies. And no matter which way you opt, potentially, there's going to be a problem, and you do not want to get into a situation where you get into your election cycle and then have somebody make a challenge to your election and then perhaps not be able to hold the election because of that challenge. Questions?
Well, it's my understanding, I mean, Mr. Ritter's the only one that served a six-year term on the board, but it's my understanding that this was really pushed through by a local legislator at the time who thought that reducing the number of years in terms of the school board term commitment would actually increase the number of people that would run. And I guess, I haven't done any study, but thinking back anecdotally, I don't think that that's happened. So I guess I would be supportive of maintaining the three-year terms. I think six years, I, I don't think three years is an ideal length, but I think six years is too long. And so I guess it'd be my preference that we would push to have that written into a three-year term.
I would say personally that I probably wouldn't have run if I had known there was a six-year commitment. That's more than anecdotally. Because you don't know when you get in, the amount of dedication and time it takes. And I think what you might get with six-year terms is people dropping out earlier and not completing. So I'm, I'm just saying, I'm with Chris. I think being able to maintain the three years would be helpful.
Mr. Hosmer?
I asked Ransum the question of, you know, why this was changed, and I did get that response, which is, which has been alluded to, that this wasn't a change we necessarily pushed for.
Didn't even know about.
Didn't know, so I guess personally, I couldn't really care less whether it's three or six. I don't think it significantly changes things. I think it is difficult to serve three years and be as effective as you can be, just because of the amount of, 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 you know, stuff that you got to kind of get your head around. You know, we've had situations where people have left the board and we've, you know, Mr. Lee, we got a pretty good candidate there from somebody leaving the board and the board, you know, choosing. So I guess my, my feeling is, I don't want to spend too much effort one way or the other on this because I don't know that it is, I guess I don't want to push for something we didn't push for in the first place. We change it to more than one other county, well, what, what happens in Webster County? It's big, and.
I, I think if you look.
Is that when all you guys are going to move back home? Is that when we all do it?
We all move back home to Marshville.
I think if you look at it, it's, it's not likely that any of the other counties are going to go to first class besides Christian County in the foreseeable future.
This is purely in the Springfield fix.
I'm sorry?
This is specifically a Springfield fix.
But it's a fix we didn't push for.
The only one that I can think that might even come close would be Joplin, but I don't think it's good.
No.
But this is what our community's used to now, I, I guess, is what I would say.
Yeah, I just, I don't think it was thought through by the legislator that did it because it costs our district now every year to hold an election if there's a thing rather than every two years. And that, I mean, there were some nice things about six years because you weren't worried about elections and new people. You had a year when you could actually focus on something else besides people having to run. And so it, now, it's, if you have an election, nothing else on there, it's over a hundred thousand dollars that we, that we, so to me, that was, that was a positive thing. And although the person thought that people wouldn't run, we had, gosh, I can name Annie Bentley and Patty Penny, and I can start naming people who committed to six-year terms that were pretty quality people on this board. So, and I think when Ed Payton had to leave as president in his second term because he had moved, you know, they were able to find good people then, just like we are with three. So I, you know, I guess my old thing is we spend more money. It's in constant turnover, which I don't like, but I think that's where we are now, and to go back would just throw everybody completely. It was a mess trying to get from six to three and how we did that and when we had elections and who was elected. But I think there were some advantages with six years, and maybe one of the advantages would have been I wouldn't still be here. Because, I mean, for the district maybe, because you were, you could only serve two terms.
Oh, I see, there's term limits.
You had term limits, you had term limits with the six-year term, you could only serve twelve years. And Jackie, I think Jackie McKenzie met that and some other people met that. So I, I, we are where we are and it's, it's working now, and to go back, I think, would be, I don't know what the, I, I just hate that we've got to go through the legislature with all the things they're doing to get us fixed because somebody tried to fix us in the first place. And so that probably concerns me the most. But to change, again, to go back, it had its advantages, but, gosh, that's been a long time ago, so I think everybody's used to this. So we'd be, it just, and then you bring up things that would never happen in the, in the first place. So I think whatever we have to do to get it done, but I, and it needs to be done as soon as possible so we're not running into that problem a year from now.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Your historical perspective is very helpful.
Very, very entertaining, yeah.
I was at a community leadership meeting this week, and this was discussed in, at that time, the chamber. Mr. Anderson mentioned that they were also very much in support of this back at the time when it was changed from six to three years, because they felt like that they could recruit more individuals to run for the board if it was a three-year commitment. So for, for myself, now, let me go ahead. Mr. Lee, you haven't mentioned anything.
Yeah, I, I don't see a reason to go backwards and go to the six-year term. I, it's an easy fix.
Yeah.
It's an, it's an easy fix statutory, I mean, in the legislature.
Yep.
Yeah. I don't want to come back and talk to Mr. Hosmer about bad news anymore, so I've got to find good news.
Okay, what?
It's got to be good news.
I think it'd be good to hear from our newest board member on what did you think if you were running for six-year term versus three-year?
He just wished he ran next year, so have a six-year term.
I think I would have been intimidated at the notion of serving six years. Three years is kind of nice because it's got a closer window of when you, when you might be finished with your service. But it's speculating backwards, I'm not sure how big a difference it would have made. But it's speculating backwards, I'm not sure how big a difference it would have made. But it sounds like we've got to do something.
Yep.
We've got to do something, or we're going to be in limbo and it's gonna.
It'll be six years.
It causes a little mud in the puddle, and it's, it's not good.
Jerry's gonna take care of it.
Yeah, we have a pretty well set, if you want. It's up to what you come up with.
I'm, I'm kind of ambivalent about either.
And I will finish up with, three years, I think, is learning time for me, three years has been tremendous, my learning time. But running for a second term of now six years, I might have had to think a little bit harder about, because that would be a total of nine. And to commit for another six years, which I may, at the end of this three, want to go another three, but right now, making that decision on six years ahead of time may have been, I had to think about a little bit more. So I, it sounds to me, and I'm thinking, we have consensus, because Mrs. Bush, three years, Mrs. Callen, three years, Frederick, three years, Hosmer, three or six, right? Andy, either way?
I don't care.
Lee, three years, Rensum, six was great, three's where we are now, and Rosenberg, three years. So I do believe that we can say we've reached consensus. And so we would like to then direct administration to move forward with necessary changes at the legislative level for maintaining our board terms at three years.
We'll take care of it tomorrow.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ransum Ellis, for coming. I wanted to make sure we could have, reach consensus tonight without any questions hanging out there, so. Okay, our section 11, the plus delta.
One other.
Oh, yes.
Other comment.
Okay, sorry, I apologize.
Talking about legislator and, and I think we need to recognize the voters in the city of Nixa. They ran a bond issue and a St. Louis billionaire decided that he wanted to get involved in that bond issue and, and plastered, I guess plastered, the community with, with mailings about the bond issue. And the people in the city of Nixa told him what he could do with all that paper. And they, and they overwhelmingly voted in favor of their schools, local control of their local education. I don't think they liked a billionaire coming in and telling them how to run their schools and not to build FEMA-safe schools. So, and the reason I mention that is, I'm assuming the next time we have a bond issue, our community's going to get the same, the same stuff, the same propaganda, the same mailing and the same meddling in our local schools by somebody who's spent a lot of time trying to, trying to decrease the funding for public schools. So I wanted to give a little shout out to the city of Nixa.
Thank you. And I apologize, are there any other, other, other?
You may remind me, there's also petitions going around this community.
Yes.
To really screw some things up, that is being funded by the billionaire in St. Louis also, dealing with teacher value, teacher tenure and a bunch of issues like that. So if you go to the public places, you're likely to get asked to sign that petition.
Know what you're signing.
And know what you're signing, ask the questions, and, and put them on the spot in what it does for education, what it does for kids. But they're, they're in Springfield now taking petitions, assigning petitions.
Thank you very much. When we go to section 11, our plus delta, what we do with our plus delta is if we have things that specifically worked, and this is part of continuous quality improvement, so things that we did tonight that worked, that you liked, that you want to make a comment, please be sure that you put that on your Post-it. And then if there are things that we need to change, and I promise you, I will look at this and see if there's some things we can change to improve, and that's our delta, is it would be our change, things to change or to do better. So at this time, we need to vote to go into executive session.
So moved.
So we have a motion by Mrs. Callen. We have a second by Mr. Lee, that the board will conduct an executive session following this meeting to discuss collective bargaining. My little sign came right up over my little speech there. Let me go ahead and say aye, right there. Oh, executive session as provided in section 610.0219 RSMO. And please vote.